Okay, you good?
Yes.
Welcome, City Council. We're all here and for the record, we'll go around and make sure that we've recorded our names over here.
Kate Bradshaw.
Chris Simonsen.
Angela Harris.
Randy Lewis.
Millie Segura-Mark.
Richard Higginson.
Thank you. Thanks for all being here. February 9th, 2021, Tuesday. Boy, this time's going by fast already this year. And we're here just after 7:00. At 6 o'clock, we had a work session. We want folks, and most of you that are here have been here since 6:00. You're always welcome. This is open to the public as well, the 6 o'clock work session. And we're pleased that you're here. We will begin by having a Pledge of Allegiance, and Lloyd Cheney will offer that. And then following that, President Michael Blotter, Second Counselor in the Valverde State, we're really glad that you're here. Thank you, and we'll appreciate a prayer from you in following the pledge.
Do you have your political allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, no other, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear kind heavenly Father, thou would be thy name. We gratefully come before thee as a city council. We are grateful to live in this land and for our freedoms. We're grateful for this republic and to have representation like these fine individuals. And we pray thy blessing upon them as they meet and gather and take of their time to discuss and cover and decide on many of the needs and issues involving our wonderful community. We pray thy hand upon our community. We are grateful for our citizens and ask thy tender hand upon those who need a special blessing during this pandemic. We are grateful for this vaccine that is reaching out and helping so many. And we pray that we might be able to return to full friendship and openness in the weeks and months to come. We pray now, as we discuss important issues, that we might be blessed and inspired and guided to receive that personal inspiration that each of us needs in our lives. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, our Savior. Amen.
Amen. President Blotter, thank you very much for coming. We appreciate it. We'd like to have our representative, Ray Ward, come forward. Thanks, Ray.
Yeah.
I think all of us know who you are here in our community.
Thank you for having me.
And we really appreciate you coming tonight for a little bit of a serious discussion on your bill. And you coming is a big deal. And we wanted to yield to your busy schedule, so we're going to have you right here at the beginning.
Thank you.
Although on the schedule, it wasn't there right at that moment. We're going to turn some time over to Gary.
So, Council, I think I've provided updates on House Bill 82, which was substituted and passed out of committee yesterday on a 12 to 2 vote for you. The update shows what the new bill contains versus what Representative Ward's original bill had. And I'm happy to answer any questions about it, but I think you're all pretty well up to speed on what it does. You know, in essence, requires every city, every municipality in the state to allow ADUs. It makes certain other things restricted or such as you can't control or limit the size of the ADUs, can't limit them based on frontage, on square footage. This does apply only to internal ADUs. In addition to that, and an ADU for those who might be listening home are sometimes called mother-in-law apartments, that means accessory dwelling units. They would be a permitted use in every zone. You know, this is different than our ordinance in that we have them allowed in all of our residential zones as conditional uses, which means neighbors can come and provide input about the impacts. This would eliminate the ability to do that. The bill does make some good, great clarifications, I think, on the building code, creates a state program that guarantees certain loans for ADUs. But it takes away our ability in the future to decide whether or not ADUs ought to be allowed in all zones or some zones. And currently, the League of Cities and Towns has been working with Representative Ward, well, for months.
Meeting against tomorrow morning.
Many meetings, many calls. I know that the League recently has proposed some amendments, some of which were included in Sub 3, some which are not, including recognition of the different uniqueness of cities such as college towns or others who already have a huge amount of rental properties and have impacts on the community as a result of that. And so I'm happy to answer any more questions. Certainly Representative Ward can answer questions about his own bill or correct anything that I misstated.
I think that was all.
And so with that, I just turn it back to you, Council.
Richard, did you have something?
Yeah.
Please, please.
I'm going to take this off for just a minute. Representative Ward, thanks for being here. And please feel free to take off the mask if you want to answer questions without any muffling.
We can hear you good, well.
I say this sincerely. We appreciate your fam-- not only yours, but your family's participation in city decision-making. One of the most frustrating things as a member of a city council is to make decisions that people may not be comfortable with and have no one show up to voice an opinion. And so we really do appreciate you participating in many discussions in the city, most recently including the nuclear project, solar power options. I mean, there's a litany, and we appreciate that. And we appreciate your service. I've got a couple of quick questions, if I could. When did the municipal toolkit go into effect for cities? Recently, but you're going to know the date better than me. I don't know it. It seems to me like it was maybe passed two years ago. It was passed two years ago. And then implemented at some point after that. That's true. So, at the time, it was presented to cities as a carrot-and-a-stick approach. We could choose to go after the carrots and be responsible as cities and help tackle this problem, or if we did not, then the state would use a stick and would encourage us along. So far, it seems that about three-fourths of the cities, of the largest cities in Utah, have adopted this ADU ordinance in the 18 to 24 months that the option has been available to them. I'm wondering if that's slower than you expected folks to adopt it? I guess to my looking at it, it seemed that many different locations were adopting it. Some in ways that, to me, seemed full-throated and would work broadly and work well, and some adopting it in ways that still, when you looked at individually what was happening on the ground, were very counterproductive, were still very restrictive. And in some cases, to me, it seemed arbitrarily restrictive, even said, "We've got an ordinance, but there's five different restrictions that, to me, seemed arbitrary," so that it seemed like it was still very difficult for the homeowner to meet the requirements of the ordinance. And it was all kinds of different, I mean, you know, there's 248 cities, so all went about it different ways. Mm-hmm. I would say that the cities that have been thinking about this longer, it seems to me, many of them have come to the place where my bill is now. So Salt Lake set this as a priority five or six years ago, and then they went through three or four years of, "Well, we're going to have 50% zones yes and 50% no," and that was miserable, and we're going to put these requirements in, and then that was miserable. And in the end, Salt Lake, as an example, I think, has come close to where my bill is now, as have other cities. I hope their experiences show that, as cities drifted in a direction, kind of this place is a place that many of them really did come to. Mm-hmm. So is it homeowners or is it cities that have come to you and requested this bill? Neither, absolutely. Where's this coming from? My, so, that's a good question. I love to tell the backstory, right? The genesis story. It comes from sitting through many different committee hearings about affordable housing and housing affordability and hearing many, many different projects of, "Well, we're going to do this little tax credit. Well, we're going to do this little federal program. Well, we're going to do this little, please give us money so we can build some affordable units." And, "No, well, actually, it needs to be more money because..." "Well, and now we're even farther behind because..." And as I sat through all of those, it just seemed to me that all of those were destined to fail with, because of just the larger forces of supply and demand. All of those seemed to me like spending money on a tiny thing compared to a very large force. And so to my thinking of what would be the larger force of supply and demand, to me, it seemed that all of these different ordinances, which to me, it seemed restricted, the use of the supply that we had already built and already invested in, was a much larger consideration for housing affordability. The bill is entirely from me thinking that and running the bill. So what does local decision-making and the preemption of local decision-making factor into your bill? I mean, to my view of things, cities have adopted different ordinances because of the fact that those cities are made up of different populations and have different, very different circumstances. So how is a one-size-fits-all, from Salt Lake to Woodruff, bill supposed to fit comfortably for those cities that are seriously trying to help alleviate the problem? I believe that. I do believe, though, that our housing affordability problem is not a Woodruff problem or a Salt Lake or a Bountiful problem. The housing affordability problem, we could say a whole Utah problem, but certainly an entire Wasatch Front problem. And the forces that drive any individual city to, as carefully as they can, make ordinance to satisfy their residents, one city at a time, don't necessarily drive toward, in my mind, drive towards solving that overall problem. And it seems to me that sometimes the things that push a city council, the people who come in and are able to best make their case to want it to turn out a certain way, sometimes those forces, to me, seem to drive the opposite direction, to make it harder for the homes to be used, to have someone in them. So to me, since it's a statewide problem, it seems worthwhile to have some of the things that we think about come from a statewide place. So it's a scary thing for me to hear statewide problem after watching the Pet Homeless Resource Center project that stole money from every city in Utah to pay for a pet project for Greg Hughes and Jackie Biskupski that still has left just as many homeless people downtown, but has now enticed more homeless people as well into the suburbs. It's a miserable failure. Painting with these broad brushes is a lousy approach. There's no, to me, there's no justification in usurping local control where individual homeowners hold individual elected officials responsible for their decisions and giving that up for a statewide program that is destined to fail in most cases. I think Bountiful has gone through several versions of our ordinance. What do you think of our ordinance, by the way? I think it's much less bad than it was before, and I appreciate all of the hard work that you did to get it to where it is now. Okay. I think, you know, maybe from the discussions that we had previously. Sure. It's a tiny thing in it, but I still find the restriction on a square foot, except for a basement, to me, that seems arbitrary. And I would say that when I have discussions from other people outside the city and say, "My city has this ordinance," they say, "That's very arbitrary." And to say-- Tell me how arbitrary it is for you to decide to sponsor a bill that takes away every property owner's right in Utah that bought a single-family home in a single-family neighborhood to have their single-family neighborhood remain. I'm not talking about parking. I'm not talking about, it's now as if every community in Utah, every neighborhood in every community in Utah is now at least a duplex, if not more. Well, I would, I would, I don't see it that same way. Okay. Part of the bill that I, to me, I have tried to draw and I have tried to be true to in drafting the bill is that, to me, I do not see an owner-occupied home where the owner who owns it is still there, facing their neighbor's-- Right. --approval or disapproval as the same thing as a duplex, where the two families who live there, neither one of them is in charge of that property, they don't know each other, neither is responsible for the property. So under your bill, where is the enforcement ability for a city to, first of all, know who owns the property when the ADU is installed, and, second of all, have the ability to enforce the owner occupancy requirement going forward? Those are very good questions and have been in many discussions about those things. So the first answer to that is, in the third sub, the inclusion of the ability of a city to require a license to sort those things out. There have been other, I do understand that, I guess, so far, everything I have in the bill is regarded only as either very bad or less bad, but still bad, by the League of Cities and Towns. That's not true. Oh, okay. And I mentioned that in here, that we're very supportive of the building code changes that you made. Okay. I think I said that at the beginning. Sure. Okay, all right. I guess what I would say-- And we're supportive of-- Referring to the parts about zoning, maybe? Correct. Okay, so referring to the parts about zoning, nothing in the bill to this point gives you any extra tools. I have had discussions with the League about those and very serious discussions and would be willing to include some of those things if that comes in the context of getting to a point, which I don't know if we can get to a point, of the League going neutral on the bill. But I would, it is my hope that I can get to a point where the League is neutral on the bill and the League needs to make its own decisions, because that's its right, in exchange for putting some things in that would give cities more tools to do the enforcement, which I know is a very difficult process. Ray, do you think that there's an assault every single legislative session on local control? Do you feel that there is? Not, certainly not in the same passionate way that it seems to you, I understand. Okay. Let me just-- And to me, I would say-- Let me just say from my own opinion, and I've been sitting on the city council for longer than most people wish I had, but-- Including you? Every single year, sometimes, in fact, more and more, every single year, it's just bill after bill after bill that either wants to micromanage what cities are doing or broad-brush state mandate or statewide mandate things that have traditionally been left to cities to manage. And I, Bountiful City right now has zero debt. Bountiful City has been run amazingly well since its inception, and its residents are blessed because of that. Every time somebody comes in and takes money for a Pet Homeless Resource Center project or paints an ADU ordinance that's the same for Woodruff as it is for downtown Salt Lake City, that takes control away from us that we can use to help our residents not only enjoy their quality of life here, but maintain their property values, maintain the community that they bought into. And I think that it's a lot bigger thing than you think it is. And I've had a lot of years sitting here just seeing these things come, year after year after year, and we need help. We have a governor right now who I'm desperately disappointed in, who ran on his credentials as a local government guy and a rural Utah guy, and evidently, he's supporting this bill now. I don't know why. I don't know why even he has now abandoned the idea that it's better, local government is better serving of the community than the state government. I would encourage you to leave decisions that have traditionally been left to the cities to the cities. If there are individual cities that are bad actors, who aren't operating in good faith, which I say we are, then draft a narrow bill that can encourage those cities to do what they need to be doing. The cities right now that have high rental housing percentages, college towns or resort towns or small towns that have no issue with housing affordability, why in the world would we include those cities without any tools, without any protections, in the same broad bill that is supposed to get all the rest of us in line? I don't understand that. So I do think there are two issues. One is the housing affordability issue, and I do think another issue is a property rights issue of a homeowner inside the walls of their own home to live with who they wish, without the city to come in and tell them, "No, you may not live with that person. You may not divide your interior space up." So to me, that property right is also a thing that is important to me in the balance. Absolutely. And when we say that we honor local control, there are different meanings of that, but one of the meanings, to me, of that is the local control of a single property owner over what they do inside their own home when it doesn't affect their neighbors. And I know that's a difficult balance, but-- You say, "When it doesn't affect their neighbors." But having another family living in the walls of that home, it doesn't affect their neighbors between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM possibly, but it does affect the neighbors the rest of the day. So when we get to the point that we say, "Your very existence, how, whatever you're doing inside your home, your existence alone is enough that I don't want you here," I don't count that. So if, to me, if there's parking, that's there and it's inside the home, to me, that, I know we see it differently on that issue, but to me, that's an important difference. Let me just share with you how I think the legislature views city councils and municipal government in general. If city councils would just get out of the way, everybody in Utah would be driving their Lexus or their Tesla to their McMansion and living comfortably with their 5G service on guaranteed basic income. If we would just get our bodies out of the way, that's how the legislature views us. We're not standing in the way of the prosperity of the state or of affordable housing. What we're trying to do is strike a balance that grants the rights that you want to grant, balances those with the rights to protect the neighbors, and keeps control on those decisions where it has traditionally been, and paints us with as narrow a brush as possible in as local a division as possible. That's what we need help with. Every year, it's the same. And I hope that at some point, maybe Governor Cox can follow through on his credentials of local government guy. I do hope. But we need help on the Hill. That if I get the bill through, I do hope it gets to a place where, with League neutrality, it includes some new tools that cities have not had before that will make enforcement issues easier for you. I do hope it turns out that way, and I do hope in the future that I won't always be at odds with you and that I can run some other bills from ideas that have come up during this process-- But we're not always in offense. I like your wife and kids. Many people do. And we like you, too. And sincerely, thanks again for being here. Sure. You bet. Sorry, I took too much time. No. Thank you.
No, this is great. I think that we're probably here, we probably had, we had the discussion with you that really was important. We want to yield to your time and your business. Do you have anything else to say to the council?
Mayor, I think, I think others, other members of the council have things they want to say.
If there's other questions, for sure.
You play my mic, there.
Sure.
Representative Ward, thank you for coming. You and I get to spend a lot of time together at the Capitol because of my day job. And I think you and I both have probably a similar and strong belief in the ability of people to seek a redress of their government for challenges that they're facing with their When I first started serving on the council, you came to me with a particular problem involving a sign ordinance, a local sign ordinance in a special zone in Bountiful. And for those that are listening, not only are you one of our fine residents, but you're one of our fine business owners. And I came, I listened, I heard your concern. I agreed with you that it was something that we ought to fix that could be addressed. And so I brought it to the staff, I brought it to the council. It took us a little longer than I would have liked, but we made those changes to the sign ordinance.
Yes, you did. Thank you.
And we were able to make that change to the sign ordinance with you petitioning your local government for redress agreements because we had the local land use authority to make that change. Because I spend so much time at the state Capitol and I'm fairly adept navigating it, I know how hard it is to get a bill passed. And I know how many bills, more than half, that are ever introduced die on the clock, just die because they run out of time, not because they're bad ideas, not because their policies are flawed, they just didn't make it through in 45 days. And there's always a growing number of bills and pressures, and this year in particular with COVID, the challenge of being at the Capitol, of being able to testify online are tremendous. And when I look at your bill with statewide zoning authority for ADUs, and I agree 100% with my colleague, Councilman Higginson, that we are on a slippery slope to statewide zoning, I wonder how in the future a business owner that is concerned about a sign or a neighbor who is concerned about the growth of ADUs and the parking impacts in their neighborhood will ever seek that redress of grievance at the state level because it is, one, so hard to gain access, you only have one narrow window of a legislative session to seek a change to that problem. You have to get the attention of a legislator who may, who may not see this as a solution that fits a statewide ordinance because it is specific to a hospital zone in Bountiful. And so I would love to hear how you feel we can tell the residents of not just Bountiful, but the residents of neighborhoods throughout Utah that they will have the access to their government for these land use decisions, given this bill and so many others that are eroding local land use authority.
So, I don't know if it's a direct answer to that, and maybe I don't have a complete direct answer to that. I do feel that the way that we're doing things, when I say "we," I mean cities as a whole with respect to accessory dwelling units, has created a very large black market, if we want to call it that. My ward, my four blocks, I can think, Beverly's the one who counts them out for me, of 12 to 15 in there. None of them have gone through the process that you have set up here. You can hate those people, you can say those are criminals and they should be fined or arrested. All of them, to my view, appear to make my neighborhood better, appear to serve the needs of the people who own the home, and appear to serve the needs of the people who are running in the home. But the system we've set up right now is difficult enough to manage that none of them have gone through the process set up here. So I don't think, I don't see it as an issue of, "This is not happening now, and now we're going to allow it to happen." I think it's fairly widespread, and our regular basis makes neighborhoods better and homeowners better off and renters better off. And I think if we can get to the point where the legal process is easy enough for everyone to go through, that it will serve all of the needs better. That's just my belief. I wouldn't be running the bill. I don't know if it directly answers your question.
I don't, I don't think it does, because the question is, when the next time we need to tweak to this ordinance, how is a regular resident of any city, whether it's Bountiful or Woodruff or Salt Lake, going to be able to get redress of that grievance through the lens of the legislative process when it's so short, so limited, and only open once per year? They won't. Can you, can you, I'm sorry, excuse me. Can you confidently say that if I have a problem or if anyone in Syracuse or anywhere has a problem with an ADU, that they will be able to, within the 45 days that the state legislature meets, be able to express those concerns and have them addressed? Realistically, honestly, intellectually, honestly, can you say that those concerns will be addressed?
A problem that, that they just don't like it or that, or that there's a nuisance?
Whatever. Any complaint, any redress, anything that needs attention, can you confidently--
No.
Can you, no. Do we not see that as a glaring overreach and problem?
To me, it seems similar to the single-family limit that we have in code now, which I know has been--
Sorry, would you mind repeating that?
So we have another, I would say, another statute in code that, to me, seems somewhat similar on a similar issue that was decided years ago, where we said, "Some people want to rent. How many can rent in a single-family home?" Cities had rules that were all over the map, and it was here and it was there, and how many could it be?
But again, it was the city, and those residents could go to the city for any--
And in the end--
--complaints, to seek any redress, correct? Regardless of whether or not you agree with those ordinances, residents could go directly to the city to figure it out and--
That's true. Residents-- Sure. And that is correct.
Can you confidently say, within a 45-day state legislative session, that anyone who has a problem or a concern with the ADU in their neighborhood, whether it be, again, often to fill more, that they will have those needs or concerns addressed thoroughly and respectfully?
I don't see those, what I see happening now--
I'm not asking now, I'm asking in the future, with your proposed bill.
So in the fut, so to be clear, my bill will say that if a homeowner stays inside these limits, that will be allowed.
But that's not my question. Will those concerns realistically be addressed within that 45-day timeframe?
Neither in that timeframe or other timeframe. If a neighbor decides that they don't like their neighbor having another person living with them, that's true. That neighbor would not then be able to come to the city council to seek, to get the city council to kick that person out of their home. They would not have that ability.
But Representative Ward, it's bigger than that. It's not, "I don't like what my neighbor's doing inside their home." It's, you know, what if, what if we find that the parking standards you've included aren't enough in certain neighborhoods? And so the neighborhood wants to petition for an increase in the parking standards for ADUs. The state legislature has now become the planning commission in the city council for every city with that regard and for 248 cities. And the planning, the parking standard that may work for the avenues of Salt Lake City near the University of Utah would not be what would be needed in my neighborhood in Bountiful, but the state legislature has now become their only option, and the state's designed process is for statewide solutions and statewide needs. And many of the things that may come up in this ordinance, as Bountiful--
And many of the things that, that may come up in this ordinance, as Bountiful has evolved our ordinance in, in two significant tranches, we have found a need to flex it in different ways. And our sister cities have flexed their ordinances in other ways. And now the legislature would become the planning commission and the city council for, for everyone in a time period where you also have to pass a $20 billion budget, provide for all the schoolchildren of Utah, consider anything that has to do with law enforcement. You know, it's, it's, it's a tough load of things that are passed in those 45 days. And I'm greatly concerned about the ability for the residents who've come to me now with, with concerns on this issue, but on a host of other local land use ordinances where I'm going to end up saying, I'm sorry, I cannot help you. I don't have any control here. Let me please refer you to your state legislator who will have this narrow window along with however many other bills they have filed to address your concern. Good luck. And I recognize there's probably not a question in that, it's more of a statement, but that's, that is my great concern because I feel my role here is to be that person that is accessible for these local land use issues and to help people solve those problems.
Understood.
Thank you. Any other, any other questions, please, please, Chris?
Mayor?
I think we need to, to not be too much longer to let Representative Ward be on his way here.
I will be very short, Mayor. Thank you, thank you. Ray, you're my friend and my neighbor.
I am.
And I appreciate this friendship. And this has been hard on me, but frankly, I think you're wrong. And I'll explain why. I've always felt the best government is the government closest to the people. That's why I ran for city council. I wanted to be able to make an impact in my community with my values and what I would like to see happen in this community. That was probably the big reason I ran. I'm asking you, quite frankly, have you ever been a mayor?
No, sir.
You ever been a city councilman?
No, sir.
Ever been on a planning commission?
No.
I hadn't either. Once I got in this position, I realized how this city was so different from Willard, Utah, from Brigham City, from all the other cities up and down the Wasatch Front, that we had a different standard. What bothers me is that the state is trying to tell us what our standards need to be in our community. I think that is wrong. The best government is the government closest to the people. We're the ones that come to Kate. What can we do about a sign in front of my office building? We're the ones that come, why haven't we got more trails? We're the ones that come and say, there's a pit in my road in front of my house. What are you going to do about it? See, this is where the rubber meets the road. And I just think that the state is trying to step on us. They need to back off. They need to let us run our cities as we know how best to run. Thank you.
If you have, yes, please. You're the only one that hasn't had an opportunity to say something, please.
Thanks for your work, Representative Ray. So you know I'm a proponent of ADUs. And I really, I really agree with much of what you've done. And having said that though, I do think that there is, I, I like a lot of what the bill accomplishes, but I do think we need to preserve local control and not permanently take away the rights of, of like the city to have those make decision making tools. I also just feel like there is a, the impact is felt locally, right? And so the balance between the property owner's rights, which we, I definitely agree with you that the, the property owners have rights, but that balance between the property owner's rights and the neighborhood's rights, the, the impact there falls to the cities. And so we definitely need some enforcement tools or, you know, a way to help manage that because those things do come to us.
I hope the final bill will include some new tools you have not had.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. So thank you for what you do and I, I agree with much of the spirit of what you've proposed. And I hope that we can work together to come up with a solution that helps, that helps cities instead of just takes away the power from the cities.
Sure. I hope so too.
Any, any other, just gotta ask one more question or so. Okay, Richard, I can see that you're, you're ready. Please.
Commitment cycle, Ray. I mean, Representative Ward.
Either or.
Will you allow us the tools that we need to be able to manage the ADUs that we have? And will you allow cities in special circumstances, the tools that they need to manage ADUs in their cities?
I hope the final bill is closer to what you want than it is now, but I don't know how it will go.
That's a politician's answer.
The question was vague. I can be very specific.
Tools that have been discussed.
So, okay, so to be clear.
LPC 3.
So to be clear.
Sure.
I am not here to, to commit to any further concessions in the bill, right? I have put some concessions into the bill at the request of the league. I'm ready to put not only more concessions into the bill, but things into the bill that cities have wanted for a long time of tools that they have not had for enforcement, that I hope will make some other problems that cities have had with enforcement easier for you to manage. That is what I hope happens.
Please.
And I, like everyone else, I, I do appreciate your work and I do have the utmost respect for you and your family. I'm sorry if I came out swinging.
I knew what I was coming down to. Gary made that clear.
Point blank, I do see this as a huge overreach by the state, truly 100%. Would there be any circumstance or scenario in which you would abandon this bill?
No. To be clear, there will be additional, I hope, additional compromise with the league. I, I do, I do honestly hope that. I'm meeting with Cameron Deal again tomorrow. But I will not abandon the bill.
Even though we have specifically pointed out how hard it will make it for all residents across the state of Utah to make any needed changes in the future.
It is my heartfelt belief that it will make it better for the residents of Utah. And I know I see it differently than you, but that is my heartfelt belief where I would not be running the bill.
Okay, we'll have to agree to disagree.
I think so.
For your service.
And I, I hope, but I don't know if the bill will fail. And I don't know if the bill, my hope is that it comes to a place that, like I say, gives more tools than you have had in the past for problems that have been pre-existing problems.
Any, anytime, having worked in federal and state government and now local government, I can tell you anytime bigger government gets involved, it makes it harder.
And I have a closing statement when I'm ready for that, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I have a final ask.
Well, we'll let Gary have the final ask, but if we could be, if we could be short.
I'll let Kate do it.
Yeah.
I know the league has, has proposed to you a number of compromises. I know there's a plan that they consider league plan three, not to be confused with substitute bill three, but league plan number three.
And I think there might be league plan four tomorrow morning, I'm not sure.
That is my ask as a council member of Bountiful City is that, is that you accept league plan three. It's not what I want. It is far from what I want. But that would be my ask from, from this seat that I sit in here, which is different than other seats I sit in, but that plan be given your, your full and honest consideration.
I have given consideration and will tomorrow also consider what, what new things the league comes to tell me.
Gary?
Representative Ward, that one of the specific tools that's mentioned is the ability for cities to actually keep ADUs from becoming illegal duplexes or illegal apartments or worse, short-term rentals that actually reduce the affordable, affordable housing stock.
I agree with that.
Do you think that's an effective tool? The ability for cities to be able to put liens on properties? Do you think it's a good tool?
I have been told by people who are on your team that it is, that's.
So the cities feel it is, if it's a positive tool, why would you withhold it from us? For political reasons? For leverage? Because that's what we've been told tonight is, you won't give us that tool to help us keep these legal unless the league of cities and towns goes to neutral. Is that correct? Did I understand that right?
That's correct.
Thanks.
So at, at a certain point, as I try and sort something out, if, if, if the ask is, please give us this thing, it's important to us. By the way, we are scorched your opposition to your bill, even if you put it in and just know that, but would you please put it in? I, I mean, at, at a certain point, I'm looking for a solution that I feel good about, but that I still know that, that if I do that, that it is a final solution to the bill. And I hope we come to that, but that's about, I think that's about where we are.
It just seems strange that we're being forced to accept ADUs, even though in Bountiful's case, we've already done it, but are being withheld, that tools that would help us make that work are being withheld from us for political reasons. There are three asks that I think Bountiful City has and, and council, you can, you can change me. The first is that please give us the tool to be able to enforce the ordinance that you're making us adopt. Second.
Okay.
Preserve a modicum of local control for our sister cities that have very diff, different demographics than us, particularly our university towns. We would ask you also to consider the cities that don't have an affordable housing issue that probably don't even have a full-time, have no full-time staff. Third, we're trying to sound an alarm that, that this bill is one example of many that happen every year that you seem not to be aware of that are regularly eroding local control. Year after year, that bulwark is being eroded. We're asking you to help. We need your help. Are you prepared to help?
I will try and help.
Counsel, if I said anything that doesn't reflect what, what your opinion is, I would welcome the redress.
I should have been quiet and just had you say that at the start.
Representative, I'm going to be really short, but let me, let me, let me tell you what I think. This is what I think. I know you're well intentioned. You've been well intentioned on this bill and for what you want to do. From my personal standpoint, I think it's just been premature. I think this bill, although it's not, wouldn't, it wouldn't fit the local authority responsibilities in any way, I just think it was premature to start with and I'll, and I'll tell you why. And that is because Bountiful is one of the first ones that really stepped up because we couldn't step up with affordable housing in a lot of other ways. We just couldn't, couldn't do it. But we recognized that and we, we did it as a city council here. This city council said, this is one place where we can show the state and we can set an example for others that this is, that this is an issue. So we did it and we even did it knowing that we would have to make adjustments to it. And how many adjustments have we made to it? I mean, at least two or three times we've changed, we've had to make adjustments. When I say premature, is I think, I think that all the cities are going to do, all reasonable cities were going to do the same thing. And I think personally, I think that this was just premature because I think if, if cities didn't do it and we were three or four years down the, the way, Representative, I think that then if we had lots of bad actors, then I think it's more reasonable to come when we've been given more time. I think what, that Richard pointing out the homeless situation, I just think that whole thing was just done so quickly and prematurely that we've ended up in, we've ended up where we are in that circumstance as well. But that, that's not what we're talking about. This is, this, this is where I am with it. But I want you to have a final statement. It's, it's time for you to be able, hey, have you been in any committee up on the, up on the Hill that's been harder than this one today?
I don't think so.
Okay. So we, so we want to, we want you to know that we, that we love you, we respect you and we'll give you the final word. And then I'm going to say something good about you as you leave. Oh, we can say lots of good, but I mean up on the Hill.
So I want to answer the thing that you just said, Mayor, and about it being premature. In the last five years, for renting a one-bedroom apartment in downtown Salt Lake, the price of that has gone from $750 a month to $1,000 a month. That's $250 a month. That's $3,000 a year that that low-income person is now paying. And I could tell you their salary or wage has not gone up $3,000 a year. If you think in terms of the taxes that we levy on people to levy an additional $3,000 a year on a low-income person is just unimaginably heavy. And to me, I would say this is what we should have done five years ago, not what we should do five years from now. So I don't think it's premature. It is, in my mind, it is a very, very heavy burden on every, on every low-income person, on every person who doesn't already own their home in Utah. And to me, that's important enough to try and do this thing because we have for five years been doing many other things, but whatever those things were that we did, we cannot say they've worked. Things are substantially worse than they were for a lower-income person with respect to housing than they were five years ago. And it seems to me that they will be substantially worse five years from now. And it is my belief that this will be a help is, is my reason for, for doing it. I. I guess that's all.
Thank you, Representative Ward. You, you, you know how we, you know that we respect you and we've, we've, but also we've been educated to each other. And as I said, we need you to, you, we need you sometimes to invite us to, to these kinds of things. Okay, as you're, as you're leaving, will you please peruse the things that have been said and, and honestly projected?
Yes.
As, as a sincere, honest, non-political, really, really caring about the residents that were, and if you need to make some adjustments that you haven't planned on, follow your heart, not necessarily anything else. And we believe in you. And I, today, this morning, I was at the health department where I'm on the board, the Davis Health Department, and we saw you, we saw you with putting forth the, the resolution for all of those and you were, you had these same tears, by the way.
I get it from my dad.
This morning. So I haven't really seen that part of you. I haven't really seen that part of you very much, but both in the, both in the House and in the Senate, that your, your resolution to honor these health departments, these workers, these people, everybody, you nearly mentioned everyone that had anything to do with helping each other in the state of Utah. And you got a huge applause and you had a lot of the people, the, the main medical people, especially from the health departments there in the, in, up in the, up in the galley. And that was 100% of the vote. And so we're really proud of you. We're proud of you for doing that. We're proud of you for, for, what I saw today was, hey, you have some fab, fabulous victories. And every one of them had to vote on that. And in the Senate, they had to vote personally on that. And that was awesome. Thank you.
That, thank you for being my friends.
We're glad that you're here in our community. We're glad with your families here. And again, we send you off with love and respect and drive home safely.
I hope our next visit is easier.
Thank you, my friend. See ya. All right.
Move to adjourn.
Well, we actually could. I really appreciate this council, all really sincere things and without, and without malice. And honestly, he had to stand and hear some, some things which I wish, I, I don't think every representative would do what he did tonight. I don't know that every one of them would do that. So really, and proud of all of you for, for how you handled that. Okay, time for public comment. We're just getting started now. We're on, we're on number two. I think we'll be able to go right along though, right here. So we have a matter of 10 minutes, two minutes a person, starting right now. And tell your name and where you live, okay? And we're glad to hear your comments.
Hi. Glad to be here and appreciate you giving us an opportunity. My name is Steve Slatter. I live at 1398 East Canyon Creek Drive. And my question is, with respect to the trails discussion that we had, on the schedule, it showed that we would be approximately out to bid now on the parking lot for North Canyon. Is my properties adjacent to that? Y'all, all of you know me, I'm a regular here. I'm just kind of curious as to where we're at. I'm just kind of curious as to where we're at in the planning. When we had talked, you know, we indicated that we'd be together and discussing that. I know you got a million projects going. I didn't know whether you guys have done some planning. No planning's been done yet. Okay. Yeah, I was just kind of curious about that.
Yeah, appreciate the question. If I may.
Please.
We've just barely did our topographical survey of the property. I think I saw that last week. No, no planning's been done yet, and we, we hold to our commitment that we'll be working with you.
And, and this discussion that was held is tremendously interesting as a citizen.
I was just going to ask you as a citizen.
Because, because the redress is, I mean, last Saturday, I could barely get out of my driveway, right? Because there's people parked on both sides of the road. Doesn't snow downtown, but up there, there's huge amounts of snow, even though there's signs saying, "Don't park here," whatever. And so, the redress for individuals is so tremendously important, that I was highly heartened by the discussion that was just held in this council. And as a citizen, I thank you guys for your interest, and, and the reality that this is where we come for redress, because all these things affect us, and it's just like putting a parking lot next to your house.
You've been here, you've been in Gary's office, and not necessarily everything goes exactly
Right.
the way you would love to have them go, and that's true with any of us, and I know that's our problem, but you have a place to go, and I think that's the point that
That's the point that
that these folks made today so beautifully.
That Billy made, and that Richard made passionately, and I think that's, I mean, I'm a small government guy, and I'm a local government guy for that very reason, so.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Mayor.
Please.
Point of personal privilege.
Yes.
Could we, could we ask Mr. Murphy if he'd like to move up to number
Oh.
on the agenda?
Absolutely.
After public comment.
Okay, after public comment.
Yeah.
Any, that's a great idea, and we'll do that, except I like seeing Mike. And maybe Mike needs to be here till 11:00. He can stay till 11:00 now.
Okay.
No, I'm just joking. So any other, any other visitors or others that would want to come and make comments? Okay, if not, we will close this public comment time, and we will go directly to, to Mike Murphy. I mean, who doesn't love Mike? No one. We all, we really appreciate both of you being here, what you contribute, and I'm going to turn time now over to Kendall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's, it's, we're so lucky tonight that we can honor Mike Murphy, and we're grateful that him and his wife Sheri are here tonight. And let me just read a little bit about Mike and what he's done here. He taught at Beaumont for 37 years. And I went to Beaumont, I know Gary did, others, and everybody loved Mr. Murphy. So 37 years as a teacher in Bountiful. He started as the band director, but also had a guitar class that really took off. Eventually, there was 350 students and three teachers just for guitar. Eventually, Mr. Murphy transitioned out of band and into teaching history, but he still taught guitar. So you would think after 37 years of teaching in a community, that would be enough, right? But no, not for Mike Murphy. He then decided to open Murphy's Guitars. He'd worked at Guitar City in Centerville for 14 years, and the business folded, so he went to the D A T C at an entrepreneurial program there, and he built a business plan. He attended a music trade show in California, got advice from his dad and from some friends, and decided to open Murphy's Guitars in spring of 2007. The store is known for its incredible customer service, good selection of high-quality guitars and amplifiers, accessories, lessons, and repairs. Mike said he'll miss the daily interaction with the staff, vendor, reps, and customers. So then you would think, okay, he taught for 37 years, had his own business in Bountiful, that's quite enough, but no, not for Mike Murphy. He became president of the Bountiful Main Street Merchants Association in 2011, after Leanne Jorgensen from the Book Garden asked if he would take on the job. And he said he would do it if they could ramp up their involvement in the community and sponsor some new events. So one such event was erecting the giant Christmas tree at the post office, which was no small feat. Mike also helped initiate the Music and Arts Festival that would happen in September on Main Street. And so, a couple of years ago, in 2019, the store manager at Murphy's Guitars, Aaron Jorgensen, expressed interest in buying the store. Aaron Jorgensen had worked for Mike for the last six years, and Mike mentored Aaron for two more years to make sure they were both ready. Mike first met Aaron when he was a guitar student at Beaumont. Aaron will continue the Murphy's Guitar brand and tradition and has fresh ideas that will continue to grow the business. Mike said he'll enjoy projects and hobbies after he's retired. Mike said his wife and, wife Sheri and him love to cycle. They've done, I know a lot of races for MS, which is really impressive. They've raised a lot of money for MS. He'll play golf, and they'll travel in their fifth wheel with their family, and I have no doubt that Mike will continue to perform, teach lessons, write and record songs with his guitar, and be an active participant in the community. Please join me in thanking Mike Murphy.
Yes.
Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. I don't know, this is a pretty tough audience to have.
I promise we're not.
You know, with as many years as I spent working on, with the Bountiful Main Street Association, it's one of those associations that once you become the president, you can't get out of it unless you retire. And so, maybe that was my motive in, in selling my store, was to get out of being the president of the Merchants Association. I will say this, the new, I always try to call it the plaza, but it's the downtown, the town square. What a great, a great, a neat thing that's going to be for the city, and it's already proven itself with the ice sheet and those kind of things. I know that Aaron is already planning on hopefully using the stage area over there for small concerts and stuff throughout the summertime. I know that I'll be working with him a little bit on the Music and Arts Festival, and we'd like to use that facility also for that, again. I hope that the city will take a greater interest in helping recruit new business for downtown. We need restaurants terribly. I mean, good restaurants, local restaurants, not chains, but we need local restaurants to help draw people to downtown. Somebody came up with an idea, and it'll, it'll never work, but a microbrewery, you know, somebody said, "We ought to have a microbrewery." Well, I don't think there's any place on Main Street where they could do that, but, but gee, what a neat way to draw people to downtown. I think it would work well. But other types of restaurants, other businesses, not law firms, not CPA firms, but retail, so that we can create a vibrant community down here of retail businesses. It needs to be done, and the city council needs to take a greater interest in trying to help recruit those businesses for the downtown community. And I know that you, you feel like you've put in a lot of effort in trying to get that town square done, and you did, and it's beautiful, and it's wonderful. But let's try to expand that a little bit more to provide services other than just that for the community. That's about all I have to say. Thank you very much. It's been a real pleasure to work with you. I'm not going away. I will still be part of the Music and Arts Festival. I might show up at a, at other meetings occasionally and give a little bit of input. I hope to not get roasted. But I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I still intend to play golf with you guys. You never invited me last summer. You said you would, but you didn't. No, we need to make that up.
Guilty, but boy, I'm ready.
Yeah. Oh, boy.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you so much.
Mayor, I have a question.
Mike, how long, how long were you president of the Main Street Merchants?
At least eight years.
Yeah. So there's no way we can enlist you for another eight?
No.
No, I, what I did want to, what I want to say by that is that the one measure of a person is the difficulty in replacing them when they're gone. And you left a, you left an enormous hole of capability and, and energy down there, and the city misses that. And we certainly don't want to tax any more of your energies, but we recognize the good that you've done, and we sure appreciate you.
Thank you. Absolutely. Well, there's other good people, you know. Tammy England with Touche, she's going to be a force, and of course, Bruce Barton, he's still around, and they'll always be part of the Main Street. Hopefully, we get some new businesses, and they'll become part of it as well. Yeah. Well, that Aaron that you have is really, he's a good. Aaron is a great. He's, he's got really good public relations skills. I like him a lot. He'll do well.
I just want to mention, sorry, you can't leave.
Oh, okay. I'm not leaving.
Don't, don't make us ask you hard questions, because we can't.
I've noticed.
I, I just want to mention, your, your work on, on Main Street is phenomenal. I think your commitment to the students of Bountiful, and how many of them
Beaumont.
I know, but Bountiful City.
Oh, okay.
I know, because you, because you taught with my husband. I think that is awesome. I have, I have friends whose, whose love of music started in your classroom, whose kids are now taking lessons at your shop, and that, that kind of twining, the dual twining of, of your impact on the classroom and your impact on Main Street, it's unique and it's pretty cool. So don't go too far.
Most people don't get to say that they had two careers that they absolutely loved.
Well, you made a big impact. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Now that we've had tears.
Thank you. Good one, good one, Richard, to, to remember that. Appreciate it.
Are there onions on the?
I know.
Onion. Two people from up there are shedding tears. Just want to make sure that there's no onions or garlic.
Onions and garlic, yeah. We've, we've made them cry. All right. Consider approval of the minutes of the previous meetings held on January 14th and 26th. Any corrections or additions to any of those? Not, I'd look for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Council reports, Richard?
Nothing further tonight.
Millie?
Nothing, only if I may for our B C Y C report, since they came and went.
Okay.
We are planning to do a leadership conference that's usually held at Utah State University, which does look like they're going to be having that this year. We are going to do our own leadership conference on May 8th at City Hall, and our area's council is actually really quite excited about it. We have a few speakers lined up, and they, they're really, really jive about it, so.
Excellent. Where we can, Millie, we can do what Richard suggested with Mike, and that is, if you've got those girls here, and they can't be here very long, this one would have been a little tougher to do that, but we probably could have done something, but, but where you can, we can, we can, we can run them up the poll a little bit, so they don't have to be here so long.
Thank you.
Kendall.
Oh, nothing tonight. Thank you.
And Chris?
Mayor, I'd just like to comment that we're continuing to get names for the honor wall at the Veterans Park, and we're still getting granite pavers being donated from all around the country, so it's catching on.
Yes, and I can't remember how old you are, but 10 years from now, you're going to be given that same exact message, and we love it. Thank you. Kate?
I, I think I've said enough so far.
Well, it must, it must be getting late, Kate. All right. Appreciate that. Consider approval of expenditures greater than $1,000 paid January 18th and 25th and December 2020 financial report. Any, did any of you see any things that needed to be, or you have questions about? And if you don't, then I would look for a motion.
Motion to approve the expenditures on January 18th and 25th, and the December financial report.
I'll second that. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Craig? We're glad to have you come up. Your item, I know you thought it was going to be a long time.
It's pretty interesting, actually. Well, thanks for having me here tonight. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the council. I just come this evening to see if you guys could consider approval for a purchase of a Ram 1500 Tradesman Pickup to replace one that we have in our fleet. It was, one of the things that I forgot to put on this staff report was a significant impact, was that it was in the budget. We had budgeted $36,000 for the purchase of a truck, and this one that we would like to get from Young Automotive Group would be for the price of $29,196. Just wonder if you guys would.
Any, any questions for Craig?
I might can make a statement if I could.
Yeah, please. I know what you're going to say. Maybe you and Kendall are going to say the same thing.
Well, Craig, the best truck around is a Ram. Thank you for buying a Ram. There's none better.
My gosh. I didn't know that you were going to say that, but we could, let's just take another hour and discuss trucks.
We can talk about trucks for an hour, that's for sure.
All right. Kendall, anything statement from you?
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, here we go.
Uh, I forgot the specific color, but it's blue.
Oh, okay.
Water department, so.
Yeah, there you go.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve the purchase of the 2021 Ram Truck from Young Automotive, Automotive Group.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Craig, it was nearly painless.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And thank you very much.
One other item, if I could, before you leave. Mayor, is that okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Unless it is contrary to instruction you've received from your boss, please feel free to come in business casual to present items to the city council, if you feel comfortable doing so.
My first time, I got to look good.
You look great.
Hey, great. I like the tie. I like the tie. You did good, Greg.
I have no complaints about it. I just want you to understand that. Especially when you're under budget, we're probably going to approve it, even if you're here in business casual.
Yeah, yeah.
Just saying.
Maybe.
Okay. So, story behind this tie, it's actually my grandpa's tie. I got all those ties when he passed away a few years ago. But Mayor Dean Staley was my grandpa.
Really? Wow. Wow. Good for you.
So there you go.
Oh, my God.
That's awesome.
Dean encouraged me to run for city council the first time I did.
Oh, really?
We live a block and a half away from him
Yeah.
when he was here with us.
Yep.
There you go.
We shouldn't have picked any color truck.
There you go. We're one person again, and one person away from knowing everybody.
Yeah.
It's a small world, right? So thank you. All right, well, thank you.
Thanks, thanks again. Chief Beeler?
How are you, Ed? You a little busy these days?
A little bit busy, yes, sir. Let's see, the first one, members of the council and mayor, thanks for giving me some time today to bring these two items to you. The first one is for animal control. It was briefly talked about earlier in the, in the meeting. In 2016, Bountiful and Davis County entered into an interlocal agreement for animal services. That agreement outlined a plan to address ongoing operating and capital costs for animal control through a 50-50 cost-sharing plan with all cities in the county. Attached in your guys' report is Amendment Number Six, which also sets the rates for the calendar year 2021. The city's obligation for service, the city's obligation based upon calls for service in 2020 usage rate is $119,680.30. The city's obligation for wild nuisance animal pickup is $1,493.50. That fee will be discontinued going forward as they're no longer providing that service, so that's the last time you'll see that on here. The city's obligation to capital projects regarding the shelter is $5,538.13, and that brings the total obligation for the city of $126,711.93. So I'd recommend that the council approve the attached Amendment Number Six and grant authority for the mayor, city recorder, and city attorney to sign the agreement on behalf of the city, and also approve the city's obligation to the Davis County Shelter in the amount of $126,711.93.
Any questions about this resolution?
I do have a question. Um, it, it's more of an explanation I'd perhaps like just put on the record for residents to find and on all of our large audience online to, to know about. I had, I had a resident that has emailed me, um, a few times with concerns about the change in the wild, uh, animals, the nuisance animals, particularly the rodents in the skunk and raccoon variety, and, and so I think it'd be helpful just to have a short explanation on the record of, um, who decides that policy. I think it's the county, but I'd love to have that kind of clarified, and why that decision has been made, just so that it's somewhere we can point to for when we get questions.
I actually thought there could be a question about that, and got some clarification with Gary. It's a little bit different than what you suggested, so I actually am gonna defer to Gary if he happens to.
Please, Gary.
To know some of that.
Okay. So, so the decision to no longer take the, um, wild animal calls was the decision of Davis County? Um, and so it's primarily the nuisance animals, right? Uh, you know, raccoons, skunks, squirrels. Um, the cost of managing that program was becoming excessive, and the cities were constantly concerned about the increase in cost, um, without really any visible reduction in the problem. So the county made the decision to, um, discontinue that service and let it be handled by private, um, by private business like you do now with rat control, essentially. Um, does that answer the question? And what was the second one?
I think that was an all-encompassing answer to my combo question, so that, that satisfies.
Okay.
Thank you.
Gary, if I ask a question?
Please.
On page seventy-one, it says, um, wildlife fee of twelve thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars. Is that what's going to go to a private individuals that pick up the wildlife, or I'm not sure what that means?
No, so that's a great question. So part of our bill, the vast majority of it, is we're paying for services that are coming up. This portion, we pay after, at the end of the year, after they tally how much service they provided in our community. That particular portion was what they did last year, and so we're paying them for what they did last year before they discontinued the service. Great question.
Okay.
Thank you. Any, any other questions? If not, I'd look for a motion.
Look to approve the amendment to the contract with the latest agreement.
Thank you. Thank you. Any, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, Chief?
Uh, this next item is a request from the police department to get approval for the purchase of thirty-eight Taser X-tos. Our current Tasers are eight-plus years old. Up until recently, we've had, we have been able to send broken or malfunctioned Tasers back to Axon, um, the company who makes them, and they've been able to repair and/or replace. Um, just recently, we have found out that ours are too old, where they're not gonna provide that service for us anymore, so it's gonna be time for us to have to make those replacements. The Tasers that would be purchased are going to be through pro-force law enforcement, who has the state bid contract, and the lowest price of fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars for the thirty-eight Tasers. We did also get a bid directly from Axon, which came back at a higher price, and both of those bids were attached to your packet. Um, you may have noticed that the Axon bid that was attached there is from September of two thousand and twenty. That, and that's the one that was provided in your packet. That price included tax, so you had already received that information when I realized that that was in there. We reached back out to Axon to get a, a more current bid that is for today and not September, um, before. That bid came back yesterday, and it is, without tax, still more money than the pro-force law enforcement bid. So if you happen to have noticed that on there, we did account for that, and the pro-force law enforcement on the state bid is the lowest price. Uh, this item that was budgeted, was budgeted in our two thousand and twenty budget, however, the current purchase price is more expensive than what was budgeted for by about two thousand dollars. There are still sufficient funds in our capital account to cover the difference, however. So I would respectfully request your approval to purchase the thirty-eight Taser X-tos in the amount of fifty-one thousand dollars, fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
I have a question.
Okay, please.
A little bit not related, but, um, maybe you, and I don't expect you to notice off the top of your head, but do you know how many times a Taser was used, like in the last year?
I don't have twenty-twenty's numbers, but I know in two thousand and eighteen, it was twice, in two thousand and nineteen, it was once.
It's pretty awesome.
I would suspect that those numbers would be the same for two thousand and twenty.
Yeah.
Um, as long as we've been keeping track of our use of force, which has been a long time, but we started to compile it as part of our council reports and our budget committees, the Public Safety Committee. Those numbers have always been very low like that, so I do know two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen are two in one.
So Chief, when do the old ones go on K S L classified? No, but seriously, what do you do with the, what do you do with the old ones?
The person who's in charge of the Taser program, um, he'll probably keep some of them for some of the parts, because it is the same Taser that we have now. So if a, if a battery goes out or something, and the ones that we have are still good, to get us through in a short period of time to either buy a new battery or get something replaced, we would have some of that. Um, the other ones, we would probably just throw away because they don't work.
Well, I used one of those once, and that was pretty fun. Yeah. All right.
Quick question, um, just for my general knowledge base. Is eight years what we would expect out of the life of the new ones? And does the, um, does the, does they have a, a warranty, um, with the switching in companies so that, you know, I, I'm assuming that maybe most of our, um, Tasers that need to go be repaired or not, because they've been deployed, but maybe because they've been damaged in, you know, being, uh, when someone is tackled or other, you know, rough activity that the police have to engage in?
I'm not sure what the warranty is, and, and I don't know when we replaced the ones before we had these ones. I'm sure that there's a warranty, and that's probably why we've been able to get replacements and parts replaced, um, previously. Um, I could definitely get back with you on what that warranty is, but we obviously would take full advantage of whatever the warranty is that they provide. Um, I would expect that these would need to be replaced probably in a similar timeframe, depending on what the use happens to be. I know that the next ones will be different than, different than the ones we have now, because there are newer models that continually come out, and it seems like by the time you're able to buy the latest version within the next year or two, you're already two versions behind. And as with a lot of companies who specialize in this, they're, they're trying to make it more expensive to purchase based upon the software that you have to buy with it and some of the features that come along with that.
Thank you. That, um, I'll, I'll follow up with you offline, just because I was generally curious. I didn't expect you to, to know, but it sounds like they're employing all of the fun iPhone tricks, a new charger for every model. That was it. I'd be happy to make a motion, I'd be happy to make a motion that we approve the purchase of thirty-eight Taser X-tos in the amount of fifty-one thousand, eight twenty-eight.
And Taser in second? Second. And any further discussions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thanks. And here, last word?
This is the annual contract for the election services that are provided by, um, the county. Budget will be eighty-five thousand dollars. That includes what they estimate to be the costs for a primary and a, um, and a, uh, final election. Happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, we look for a motion to approve the contract. It's actually, I think, an interlocal agreement, if I'm not mistaken. I apologize. Yeah, just an interlocal agreement, so motion.
Yeah, I'd be happy to make a motion that we approve the interlocal agreement for election services as presented.
Second?
Any more, uh, further discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
The last thing, this is our last meeting here, would you please, would you please extend to the fire station how awesome this has been to be able to use this. I mean, this is, this has been pretty seamless for us and really effective for us. So if you could please, thank you.
You got it.
I think we should make a motion that when COVID is, allows us, that we host the fire department at our house.
Yeah, we can do that.
Or some thank you, something involving food.
We said, in fact, that, we're, we're going to host a cog for the first time in Bountiful. We, we always do the party for the cog in July a lot. Since I've been here, I've always expanded for the cog. But we're, we're going to host them as a cog meeting in our new facility, uh, and that's gonna be pretty fun. I think that's an angle. I think, you know, I hope that that's gonna be worked all kinds of schedules, okay? So, Peyton, Lloyd and I, we were like, uh, Martin and Lewis yesterday a little bit.
Really?
We really worked well together. We did a virtual tour yesterday.
Nice.
Virtual tour, and it was really fun. Lloyd's really good. Uh, we had, we had a good time.
Here's that one. I'm going to name this one here.
Oh, I, uh, I, I was a nonsensical.
Lloyd was the barely suppressed rage.
Hey, if you see some of the, some of the persons go out, look at them very, very closely, because they're, they're very clever. And that's the fault of those two and Sean, of those two. Have you seen the ones that are about the no?
Yes.
No New City Hall. There's a lot harder than just that.
Okay.
All right. I think trying to call it a renovated city hall for a purpose, I hope it's, I'm sure, maybe that, but these are clever. And I'm, uh, I told Gary that, uh, I was impressed, so. So, yeah, and Clay doesn't wanna take any responsibility whatsoever for one thing, and they're, they're very clever.
Everything, everything, everything bad in the city is my fault.
Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Okay, right.